It is five o'clock and this special called meeting of the Kerrville City Council is in order. We're going to begin with prayer and pledge by Kim Clarkson.
Father God, we come to you as always and ask that you keep our ears open and our hearts humble so that we can listen and so that we can feel your guidance directing us in matters of the utmost importance to our citizens. Help us remember to keep in mind our citizens now, but always be mindful of the future. Be mindful of the wants and the needs of our community and find ways to work together to do what is in the best interest of our city. We thank you for your guidance. We look to you for your guidance. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let me mention some factors of how we're going to do this meeting. First of all, thank you for attending and listening. Citizen or public participation continues to be available by calling in via Zoom, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, by now they would have been required to sign up when they came into the building. When speakers are called, they are to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after the public comments have concluded. Thanks to everyone in advance for helping us by respecting these rules of procedure. And we will have a podium when we come back. I'm sorry, got you. All right. I was missing it. We are going to adjourn into executive session now, and I know if you came to address this or, you know, make some statements regarding this issue, that you're here to do that. But we need to take some time to meet an executive session and then we will come back after that executive meeting. I want to ask for a motion to go into executive session under Sections 551, 071, 551, 072, and 551, 087, under the Texas Government Code.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session under those code numbers.
Okay. Got a motion. Second. All in favor of that motion, if you'd like to raise your hand, please. Okay. And it is unanimous. It's 5:03. We will go into executive session. We are out of the executive session at 5:19 and come to the open session and proceed to item 2A. Ms. McDaniel, will you call that in for us?
Subdivision Development Agreement with Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction Limited for city-owned property located in the 3200 block of Loop 534. And we do have five citizens signed up to speak.
Okay. All right. I'm going to call the city manager, Mark McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to elaborate a little bit on what's in your packet in terms of the development agreement in a little more detail with this presentation also for the benefit of the public to see. So this is about workforce housing, and if we'll go to the, I'll go to the next slide and anchor that in the Housing Chapter of Kerrville 2050. You all I know recall that we didn't even have a Housing Chapter in Kerrville 2050 until midway through, citizens were telling us loud and clear, we've got to do something about our housing issue here in Kerrville. And so the steering committee was actually the steering committee for the entire plan because we didn't have a subcommittee in place for that. So, you know, 30-plus people worked on this with our outside consultants. And they came up with several things for the Housing Chapter in terms of guiding principles and action items. But here's just a few of them that pertain to this particular project. You know, H1.1, Develop a Citywide Strategic Housing Plan, which include market supply and demand delivery system capacity, development economics incentive and so forth. Well, we did that with the Mayor's Task Force on Workforce Housing, which I'll talk some more in a moment. And they came up with a strategic plan. H1.2, Research Potential Funding Mechanisms for the Development of Workforce Housing. H1.3, Explore Financial Incentives and Our Infrastructure Funding for Developers of Residential Subdivision Supporting New Single-Families Homes Under $200,000. And H1.5, Examine the Use of City Property for Desired Housing Projects. So this project certainly pertains to all of those items. This next slide is a little bit more out of the housing study and strategic plan than I just mentioned. It was completed in 2019. Again, it was led by the mayor, and I know that all of you were attending those meetings. It was conducted by Community Development Strategies out of Houston, Texas, that has done these all over the state and I think even outside of the state now. So very capable firm. They recommended nine strategies, and there's two below that in particular speak to this project. First of all, to create a defined city policy for financially assisting developers with public infrastructure costs in return for housing developments that are priced to local workers earning 120% of median income and below and meet reasonable quality standards. And then also utilize land owned by public agencies for workforce housing development. So this project hits a segment that's actually lower than the 120% of area median family income. It's up to 80% a maximum. That's where we came up with the $227,000 maximum price. The city has also undergone or pursued workforce initiatives on this particular piece of property on numerous occasions. We did a request for qualifications back in 2016. Then we did requests for proposals, which are a little different. We issued those in 2018 and then late 2019 on this particular piece of property. No award was made in any of those cases, and mostly that was due to the level of incentive that was requested. In some cases, three times as much as what this project did before you today represents. Or the build-out was not within a reasonable period and maybe was, you know, a handful of homes, four homes, eight homes per year, while this project is a minimum of 10%. So they have to hit that, otherwise they're in violation of their agreement breach, and so there's a clawback. A little more about Lennar. Lennar was founded in 1954 and is now a Fortune 500 company. It's one of America's leading home builders. They build in 21 states and more than 76 popular real estate markets. The residential subdivision built an agreement for you today. It actually was Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction Limited, which is part of the family of companies owned by Lennar. This is the subdivision that would be developed under this agreement. It's 33.81 acres on the southwest corner of Loop 534 and the new Olympic Drive extension. It still needs to be annexed into the city, zoned and platted before closing. So that's, the city would be pursuing that as the applicant, and that's why those development fees are actually waived. There's a minimum of 125 lots, so when we were speaking with them, they showed some concepts that were up to 130 and even greater. And if there's some mitigation of some floodplain, there could be even more homes. But a minimum of 125, and these would be 45-foot lots, which under our new zoning regulations means it would be an R2 zoning. This is what they're proposing as far as their product that they have available now. Let me go back. Here we go. So there's five models to choose from with different elevations for each model. And the homes range in sizes from 1,034 square feet up to 1,871 square feet. Some of the amenities, there's two-car garages. It's, their packages include, they're everything included program. So there's not this, these add-ons when you're purchasing a house or you're getting custom upgrades. It's all one price and they're all included. This includes things like granite countertops, luxury hard surface floors, full stainless steel appliance packages, also energy efficient features, the defense backyards and landscape package. And of course, they would have to follow our subdivision code, which requires sidewalks and things such as that. This is their commitment in the agreement. They would post to maintain an irrevocable letter of credit to secure the payback provision in the event of default in the amount of the assessed value or appraisal on the property of 1.69 million. They would cover all the closing costs after all the annexation and plating is done. They would install subdivision infrastructure. They estimate the value at 5 million. If it's more than that, it's still on their dime. So, but their estimate was 5 million. They'll build homes to be priced between $185,000 and $227,000. And again, that's the 80% of the AMFI as defined by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. There are price adjustments allowable as the index of TDHCA changes from year to year. They also have a provision that they can increase the cost if the materials increase by a certain percent. If they increase over 2.9%, which is kind of what they've seen here recently, then they got to get approvals for that. So it's not an automatic thing. The city's incentive would be the land only. As I mentioned, it appraised here recently at 1.69 million. We had appraisal done on this the last time we did the RFP, and it was much less. But with the sale of the school property in particular, next door, and some other comps that have been more recent, the price has gone up to 1.69 as far as your appraisal. When this is built out, the taxable value will be an estimated 225, or I'm sorry, 25 million. So we're converting this value that we have now that we own, that's not taxable, of 1.69 to 25 million over the period of the agreement. There are no development fees, as I mentioned, for annexation, zoning and plating. They're estimated at about $4,800. And again, we're the applicants, so we're not going to be charging ourselves. There would be additional fees for park identification requirements, utility tap fees, building permits for the homes estimated at about $712,000 that Lennar would be paying over the life of the agreement. This is the project schedule. So we're here today on the 21st of October. The due diligence period for them expires on the 20th of November. During that period, they'll be doing soil samples and studies, and they'll do an environmental study. And then annexation and zoning, plating, so forth, we're estimating four to six months just because state law requires a lot of hoops to jump through on annexation, even if the city's the applicant. The closing on the property would be 15 days after all those approvals. And then they would commence construction within two months of closing and commence construction of the actual homes within 18 months. So really, we're looking at about this time next year that they would be constructing the homes after all the infrastructure's in. And then within 30 months, they have to have at least 10% of those homes built. And then each year thereafter, 10% more at a minimum. So tonight, the recommended action for you is to approve and authorize the city manager to execute agreements or an agreement with Lennar Homes substantially in the form that's presented in your packet. And at this point, Mayor, I would take any questions now or after public comment.
Let's go ahead and deal with any questions from the council, and then we'll hear speakers.
Okay.
Well, I had, I've asked you questions already, but so for the benefit of the public, the appraisal was done recently. Is that correct?
Yeah, very recently. We had it reappraised at the same time that we were doing the appraisals on the KMM project.
I have some more questions, but go ahead if anybody else has some.
And I think, Mark, you had said there will be an HOA with this.
Yes.
So that, and will be under the developer for a while until
Yes.
a certain number of homes have been built and turned over.
People say that homes built at this, at this level in terms of price are not workforce. Explain why we have not been able to get that price point lower.
Just the cost of construction and in the RFPs that we received to date, we haven't received anything like this in terms of the level of investment required or subsidy and then the price point that we've been looking for. We have really kind of set a policy for ourselves, both EIC and council, in looking at projects. You know, I know EIC's looked at a subsidy of something in the order of $20,000 per lot and just didn't want to do it, particularly since it was a higher price point than what we're talking about today. This is a much lower subsidy than that, and it's a lower price point. And so I think the RFPs that were issued, both in 28 and 2019 in particular, they set out what we want to see, and that is, let's keep it right around this 80% AMFI. No higher than. And if you don't, if you can't hit that benchmark, then you're not going to get the incentive. And so it's just, it is the cost of construction. And this particular company, because they're a production builder and they're so large in terms of all their vendors, they can do it at a cheaper cost.
And Mark, there's no, no way that they can come back and say, oh, we need this now, or we need this. We need another incentive, or we need some fee, other fees paid, or anything of that nature.
Well, I mean, we do agreements all the time and like with others, and they'll come back and want to have an amendment. But it's got to be mutually agreeable. You all would have to approve it. But we're not, this is pretty straightforward.
I have one more question, and I know they have also. So if the 2.9% should cost of lumber or something go up dramatically, is that like $6,000 with that? I mean, literally, what would that add to a price of a home to, it wouldn't keep it unaffordable at that time.
No, no, it's very incremental. And then if it's above that, they've got to, it's got to be accepted and approved by the city.
And the letter of credit for the 1.69, that, that means we get the land back. Is that right? In other words, should they default?
We call their letter of credit.
Okay.
We wouldn't get the land back, but we would get the value of the land back.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. I mean, I had others, but you've answered them already, so.
I've got one more. They're so big, they're building in San Antonio, they've got their own equipment and a lot of their workers. Will they be able to hire some local workers?
I don't know how they intend to proceed on that. We just haven't got to that level yet. I would expect that they would use some local folks just because of, you know, transportation costs kinds of things. And, you know, this is a, this is a test of the market for this kind of a housing. And if they're successful, they may do more, and they'll, they'll need local vendors, contractors.
All right. We have five speakers?
Yes, sir. The first is Chris Bratton, and that will be read into record by Kim Meismer.
This is a write-in comment from Chris Bratton, the Vice President and Lending Officer with Guadalupe Bank, 4011 Spring Mill Drive. In my short time here in Kerrville, our bank has specialized in single-family construction loans and their eventual mortgage takeout loans. I can definitely speak to the rapid increases in construction costs and the limitations that places on the consumers waiting to build a home. The definition of workforce, workforce housing will undoubtedly change in the new normal of construction costs. I think that is something to think about while this request attempts to maintain the old definition of workforce housing at cost levels that likely will not return. My first thought is that in order to achieve the goals laid out in the Kerrville 2050 Plan with the current construction cost climate, in order to hit the price targets in this request, the land must be free. It simply has to be. But what do we say, what do we, as a city, say to the local builders currently building at a level just above this price point? By granting this request to Lennar Homes, a major tract builder that is publicly traded, you are effectively placing a cap on prices for the next five to seven years. While that may sound good to accomplish a workforce housing goal that is catastrophic to the local builders currently attempting to build and sell new homes in the 225,000 to 350,000 range at full cost, including land. These local builders have names: Wayne Labiallet, Travis Page, Hank Gregory, Bob Rue, Kerry Champagne, and many more. By granting this deal to Lennar, you are telling these local builders that they do not matter. I wish I could sugarcoat it into something better, but it is what it is. This land is going to be in demand when the new middle school opens. It is walkable to all three levels of schools. In a Dallas suburb where I moved from, this land would be bought and developed before all others. I am concerned that this is a desperation move to check a box in the Kerrville 2050 Plan, and the decision is being rushed. These aforementioned local builders would all love the opportunity to have the same deal that Lennar is getting, and the money would stay local. Their trades are local. By choosing Lennar, the city council is choosing an out-of-market builder with out-of-market subcontractors. The only benefit to Kerrville is the eventual property tax base. And according to the city's own projections of requiring 12 homes within 30 months of closing, the city will not recoup its free land investment in the property tax base for over 10 years. I recommend a deal like this, but for a local developer who will use local builders to build. If the city goes with Lennar, don't be surprised when these local builders, who call Kerrville Home, find another home. Why would they remain to play an unfair game? We are talking five to seven years of price caps in a rising cost environment. In order to feed their families, they may have to leave. Thank you all for doing what you're, what you do and serving. It is a thankless job. These decisions are not easy, but in my opinion, this deal ignores the local people who are committed to building this community.
I'd like to comment on that.
Okay.
Can we comment in between, or do we have to wait until everyone speaks before we comment?
Your call. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that I wish that a local builder could do this project. We've let this project out for bid three times now. We've opened it up. We've never had anyone that can do what this is. I would love, I would love nothing more than for a builder to say, I can do this exactly the way this proposal is. But the truth is, from 2016 through now, we've asked, what can you do? Please help us with this. And we haven't ever gotten anything until now, in my opinion, that puts us in the position that we find ourselves in tonight. The local builders that Chris mentions, his price point was 225 to 300. This price point is 187 to 227. We're talking a different market. We're talking different buyers. We're talking different products. We're talking some, it's not apples to apples. And when we did the Vintage Heights, we didn't have any builders that were upset about that. The incentives were greater with Vintage Heights. The price point was the same. So if we're talking price point, I just have a really hard time with that. I want to support local every single opportunity we can, but I also want to support our workforce, the people that are here now and the people that are going to come as we create these new jobs. And I say that because I know Chris, and I don't know if Chris is watching or if he'll hear that, but, but I just want to make it very clear that if a local builder could come and do what this builder is doing, I, in a heartbeat, would want for a local builder to do this project.
All right. Another speaker?
Gil Salinas.
Mayor and members of the city council, just for the record, Gilberto Salinas, 1700. Cindy Baker, Executive Director with the Kerr Economic Development Corporation. Mayor and members of the city council, just a quick side story. Back in 2017, Amazon had just passed, or issued an RFP for its HQ2 in North America. So basically what that was, they were looking for a second location for their headquarters. Can't believe it was three years ago, but in that proposal, which I had thoroughly read, and it was very extensive, they were specifically asking for a description of quality of life in your community, what that looked like, connectivity via trails, both walking and biking. So basically what Amazon was asking was, how can our employees get to work and back home without having to get in a vehicle? And then they were asking for the housing market, what that looked like. There were three things that they were looking for. One was availability, pricing, and then here's the key, diversity of housing options. So in economic development, I mean, this was a big deal. We had never seen anything like this before where a company was specifically asking for all these things before they actually got into the actual deal itself. Now, looking back, I can say that this was the beginning of a new way of doing economic development. Housing availability and affordability has become a huge factor in how companies are approaching communities today. And that's because they need to ensure that their workers, all the way from the basic entry-level positions to the CEO and the president of that particular company and everybody in between, has an opportunity at purchasing a home. And it's to their benefit, to the company's benefit, that they do this. And that's exactly, coming back to diversity of options, that's exactly what Amazon was looking for. Now, for us in Kerrville, this directly applies to our newest corporate citizen, which is Project Sky Master, otherwise known as Killdeer Mountain Manufacturing. And at the KABC, that's precisely, that's exactly the phase that we're in right now, helping on with housing, well, number one, looking for employees, housing for those employees, and also for the relocation of some of their executives that are going to be coming into the area here in the next few months. I'm also here to say that, as part of our job, KMM is just the first of several companies that we're going to be recruiting to the area as we continue to develop and nurture this industry cluster. At the local level now, as far as some of our other companies, I mean, there's companies that are active, our top employers are actively hiring, and they're asking about housing. That includes the state hospital. I mean, they're getting ready to start hiring 200 to 250 employees. They have a $30 million capital investment project out there. All Plastics, James Avery, Prime Metals, which is also a new company. Peterson and Fox Tank, they've taken a hit, but they are going to bounce back. The other one is OWLE, which is the newest manufacturer. They occupied the, or took over the 400,000 square foot facility in Kendall County, just on the other side of our county line. And they're going to be hiring from Kerrville. The reason I know this is because a site selector that was representing that company, somebody I've known for quite some time, she's from the Northeast. She called up about four or five months ago and said, we have a prospect, so on and so forth. Can you help with information about your community as it pertains to housing, quality of life, so on and so forth? Because they are going to be hiring extensively in your community. So I'll leave you with this. A local workforce that cannot find adequate housing will cause an entire community to suffer. Basically, they can start the process of pulling that community down. There's empirical data and research that shows that availability and affordability of housing in good neighborhoods correlates with positive health, proactive education initiatives, and economic potential earnings for families. So this economic housing toolbox, and I like that phrase, which you'll be considering and discussing today, is the key to introducing this much-needed investment that we need in Kerrville, Kerr County, just to remain competitive and also to retain our local companies. We don't want to be in a position where our companies have to start looking elsewhere because they can't retain employees because of housing. And ultimately, this also helps ensure economic opportunities for our local workforce and our families for years to come. That concludes my, well, not presentation, but speech. Thank you for your consideration as it pertains to this housing toolbox and economic development.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Barbara Dool, or Do- Dool?
My name is
My name is Barbara Dool. I live at 2919 Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. I haven't heard anything about this proposal until yesterday when it hit the papers. I don't know whether it's been brought before the council in an open meeting of the citizens until just now. One of the things I am concerned about on the agenda, it indicates that we are going to have this discussed, but it does not indicate that it was to be an action item. I don't know if the citizens of Kerrville have had any opportunity to talk with you except right now, and they did not know that there was a decision going to be made today. So I would strongly recommend that you hold off on this and get some more information. And some of the reasons that I say that involve the following. I am all for doing something about workforce housing in Kerrville. I've heard it talked about for the 15 years I've been here. I personally had investments in residential housing here, and I know what the rental market looks like. I know how difficult it is for people in the lower incomes to find housing that's decent, respectable, and a good place to raise their children. I understand all that. I applaud you for doing what you can to start resolving this. It needs to be done. However, I have a big problem with the current proposal as it stands. One of the things is, if you look on the KerrCAD property website, the site that is being proposed as 33 acres is actually two parcels. One of them's an interior parcel of 27 some acres. The other one is a 6.6 acre parcel that is frontage along Loop 534. That frontage property, if you compare it with some other properties available on the market right now, today, on major arteries, I would say that property, based on those comparisons, is actually worth somewhere in the range of $1.2 million for that 6.6 acres. Because of its location, what's going to happen in the next few years, as they talked about, the fact that you've got a middle school located there, if we go ahead with this proposal on Lenar, you're going to have additional homes there. And the additional growth going down along toward Center Point, anybody coming off I-10 is going to go the loop. It's a good location. And I don't see giving away that 6.6 acres at a minimum. Pull that back out of there. There's still enough land with the 27 acres that are left to meet the 125 homes. I took a look at Lenar's website, what they're doing in San Antonio. I don't know if any of you have been down there and actually looked at the housing development that has these models in it. But I looked at the map of them and also looked at the prices. They're asking for these same models in San Antonio. Right now, today, on the market, their smallest model that you showed on the, on the screen earlier is priced at $149,999. So 150,000. We're pricing it at $185,000. I want to know why it's going to take $35,000 more dollars to be able to make money on that home in Kerrville, giving Lenar the land free than it cost them in San Antonio to build that home. Their top home was under $200,000, the top of the four models that you showed. We've got a problem. I think it needs more research. If we can do better on that price point, we should. Just because we're allowed to go up to a certain point doesn't mean we need to give Lenar permission to charge it. We need to pull that in. I think we're allowing them too much money, especially if you give them the land free. Another thing that I think should be considered before any agreement is signed is subordination of land.
It's been four minutes.
I'm sorry, how long did Mr.?
Yeah.
He had four.
Yeah.
Whoa. Okay. I think first, to finalize that, no action should be taken this evening. The citizens have not had the opportunity to look at this. The information in the paper was wrong. It priced the value of the property at $1 million. You've said in your documents, it's 1.69. This is not ready to go forward. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
John Harrison?
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow here in Kerrville. Hey, I'm here to support you all giving the city manager approval to go negotiate a deal. I think that's what you were talking about here tonight, just giving him approval to go negotiate a deal. You're going to see it again, I'm sure, when he gets your proposal back. I looked at this very simply. Other people have looked at whether you need workforce housing, and they thought everybody's read Aaron Yates's overview of this thing that he published several days ago. I thought he did a masterful job. I just, I look at it basically from a financial point of view. You've been sitting on a parcel of land out there valued at $1.7 million for a number of years. I don't know how long the city's owned it. But it's been sitting there, not generating anything for the city. The question is, what are you going to do with it now? You can sell it to somebody. I mean, sure, somebody might be able to give you $1.7 million. I don't know if it will or not. I, I personally wouldn't because I'm not a developer, but if they did, you'd have $1.7 million you could put in the bank and get 3% interest on it and get, generate $50,000 a year. Not a bad deal, but that's not a very good deal. It doesn't do anything for the city. It doesn't bring us housing to do anything. Or you could do what you're talking about here, is invest that parcel of land in housing. And I think that's what you ought to do. You ought to invest that parcel of land. You invest it in, with, with a deal with a builder who's going to commit to, over the next 10 years, and we all know if he's successful, they will do much better than that, generating $25 million worth of property value that will return to our community $500,000 worth of tax revenue every year. Now, I know the city doesn't get all that, but KISD gets a lot, the county gets a lot, and the city gets $125,000, $130,000 a year. It's a no-brainer, folks. You know, you're investing $1.7 million if it's really that valued and going to get $500,000 worth of cash flow from now on for our community. I'm encouraging you to do just what you're talking about doing tonight. Give the city manager approval to press ahead and negotiate a deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Stricki?
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. I was here last fall complaining about a deal, and we had a heated conversation, the three of us. And it worked out really well because it built our relationship, and we understood what each other thought, and we shared thoughts in this.
Bruce, would you take the mask off? You're all right in terms of distance, but we can hear you clearly.
No worries. Thank you. I appreciate that. But I'm here tonight because this project actually makes a lot of sense, unlike the project last year, in my opinion. And we have seen that that didn't move forward. This project brings options to Kerrville. It's not all the options. It's not all the options I'd even like to see. It's not perfect. But this is a really well put-together project that can actually be done. The math works already, which it never did for me on the Vintage Heights project. And we get to sell the property at the appraised value. And the, everybody has a different opinion, but the magic in commercial and development work in real estate is the user. Who's going to use this property? Well, we've got 50 acres on Holtsworth on the market right now, and we've got, you know, we've got 60 acres out at the airport, right on the state highway. And we've got five acres over down at the busiest corner in Kerr County. We have so much commercial property available for development right now that's non-residential. The Loop is one of the last places that I'd be looking for. There are 17 acres right around the corner that have been on the market for over four years that are owned by two different property owners. And they're less than, you know, it's less than if you take the per-acre price, what you could buy that for. So this use, a residential use, drives what this price is, would be in commercial real estate. And if we look at that, the best use of this property being near schools and on the new Olympic Drive is a residential use. And we've tried to do this many times over the years, and it's been unsuccessful. We're meeting the 2050 Plan, which was the largest community effort we've ever had on how we should move this city forward. And this hits a number of buttons in there. I've spoken to a number of the local builders, some that were mentioned this evening, and gone through the math with them. And I pointed out to them that this is a price point they can't build in. It's not going to affect them. In fact, I looked it up when we were sitting in the corner. Last year, under 225, there were just over 150 houses sold in Kerrville. If these folks build these houses and sell them all in one year, they'd have a one-year effect on the, on the price points. If they sell them 10% a year, it's not going to have an effect. And our builders, like the ones who were mentioned, are building in price points that are above this. So again, we're offering an option, another choice that's missing in Kerrville today. This project has been in the works for many years. We've done three different RFPs that I recall in my time here in commercial and development. We've never found the magic of something that would work. All the builders that were mentioned and some others that I've spoken to, none of them can do what we're talking about. These guys are going to come in, they're going to develop the whole thing and build the houses. That's the magic. Houses in Tulsa, Oklahoma are much cheaper than they are in Kerrville. I have a Kirk Keller Williams broker I've been friends with since I was a child. He sells huge houses for amazing numbers in Tulsa. San Antonio, the volume is different. And so, you know what? If I'm buying a crate of apples as opposed to five apples in a bag, I'm going to pay a different price. It makes sense. The numbers work for Kerrville. This is the kind of project we want to see, and I'm really proud to, after complaining and coming here and arguing last year, that I'm here saying, "This is the thing we should do."
It's been four minutes.
It's a good first start.
Very good.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, thank you. All right, do we have any other?
That is all the speakers, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay, council, you have questions or comments?
I'm happy to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a residential subdivision development agreement with Lenar Homes of Texas Land and Construction to develop workforce housing, which is substantially the same as presented.
All right. So the motion is for the city manager to continue the negotiations and come back to?
Authorize the city manager to finalize the agreement.
That's finalized.
Anybody else?
Well, I would second that motion, but I had a couple of things I wanted to say, a couple of words.
Okay.
One of the things I wanted to mention is, today I went on to the Kerrville Board of Realtors MLS, and in the morning, there were eight houses between 187 and 225. This afternoon, there were 14 houses in that same area. So we had a couple more come on the market. But when we look at that price point, there's, they're not here. They're just not out here. We don't have them. And, and we are needing that so very, very badly. Point number two is, we've talked about these 33.81 acres, they're free and clear. They cost the city a street about 12 or 13 years ago, but I think we got the best end of the deal with the land. We've talked about the workforce housing. The question, does it make sense financially? I think John has alluded to that, and, and we've, we've looked at the numbers, and absolutely, yes, it does. And to Barbara's comment on that we should use commercial along the highway, on the lower part of it, I think personally, the highest and best use of that is not commercial, in my opinion, right now. We need this workforce housing, and we need it for, for residential. And that's, I, in my opinion, that's the highest and best use. And I'd like to say, I know we have lots of good local builders. They're reputable. They're good builders. I appreciate them. We need them. But I believe that this project is going to take a production builder, and, and our local builders just aren't that level of production builders. And I know they may feel differently, but we do need them, and, but I just don't think this is one that they can take on. The developer has the means to handle the number of homes. He has the dollars to back it up. He has the letter of credit. He can cover closing costs. He can put in the infrastructure to an estimated $5 million, and he's willing to take this risk and do it at the required price point. So it's a huge commitment on his part. In real estate, one of the sweetest words for a seller are "ready, willing, and able," and that's what we have here. We have a ready, willing, and able buyer, and I think we need to take advantage of that. We also, we need to remember that we have businesses in our community that rely on having, or part of their commitments are to, their employees have to live in Kerr County. And we have an obligation to make that happen, and I think this development can do it. And it also, we've talked about, it fulfills the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, and we have an obligation to do that. And I think we've, we've got one of the best possibilities sitting right here in front of us, so I will support this.
Let me make just a couple of comments. I've long been interested in, in housing in Kerrville. Within three years of moving here, we moved here in 1984, within three years, I was involved with some other folks in getting Habitat for Humanity started, which now has built 102 houses. When I ran for office in 2018, I said, "One of the things I want to address is workforce housing." And then after coming in, the first state of the city that we did, I said, "We're going to form a workforce housing task force," which we did. And they, they did good work, including builders and real estate agents and others. And in fact, the, these are my files so far on housing and housing issues that we have here. But I want to say something else, that you just talked about workers living in the city. About, apparently about 66% of workers in, in the city live outside the city. I don't think that's good. I think it needs, that, that needs to be, needs to be more opportunities here locally. And then I was just going to say, I think this kind, this kind of housing also enables some folks, including young folks, to stay in Kerrville that might not otherwise have the opportunity. So for both those coming in, that Gil talked about, and for those we'd love to see stay, I think, I think this is good. Is this a perfect deal? It's a real good deal.
It doesn't exist.
And we look forward to, we look forward to hearing our city manager back with us on this. All right.
So you made a motion.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the, the motion is to authorize me to execute the agreement.
That's execute the agreement. Execute. Doesn't do.
Excuse me?
You're out of order.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
As long as it's substantially in the form that's presented to you now.
All right, okay. All right, with that clarification, all those in favor, let it be known by the raised hands.
I think, do you need a second, or did I get a second?
Did you get a second?
I seconded it.
Judy had seconded it already.
All right. Okay, I thank you very much. It's 6:04. We're adjourned.